Good afternoon and welcome, everybody, to the July 17, 2019 Council Work Session. Very substantive conversation today about how we move forward on addressing homeless systems. And I just want to say one thing, we have two really important topics on today's agenda. So I am going to try and watch the time carefully so we're sure to get to the second item as well. So just with that cautionary note to everybody about timing. All right, so manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is a great conversation. As you know, the tax report has been an important piece for us, a building block on one of your focus areas. You start off with three, with public safety, community safety, housing, and then also homelessness. And this is an important part of that homeless, a part of the stool. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you. My name is Jason Dedrick with the City Manager's Office, and we're here today to give you an update on that work to implement the Homeless Services Systems Report, which is a mouthful. And then also to have you, provide you with the information needed to potentially have you approve staff's recommendation for how to allocate that 1.9 million that you have set aside. So what I'm going to do is briefly set the context for you in terms of our overall city efforts, overall city resources that we're dedicating to homelessness, so you can see how the 1.9 million fits into that. And then I'll turn it over to Peter, and he'll walk you through the details of the staff recommendation. So that's the plan for our presentation. So this graphic on the first screen here is a great reminder of sort of one of the things we're learning about the overall system, which is the various parts of it and where different entities fit into this broader picture. So we have at the center this revitalization of coordinated entry and sort of the core of how the system in our county works. And so much of that is the work that Lane County does. And then around the edges, you see these three key things around rapid response, housing options, improved access. These are areas where the city has more of a strength, where we have more of a role to play. And you'll pick up on that theme through our presentation. So this is here is sort of a reminder that we're talking about a system, and our work as a community is to find where all the different entities working on homelessness best fit into that system. So that's a good reminder of that bigger picture. So when we talk about our main thing today, again, is the recommendation around the 1.9. Just as a reminder, back in FY '18, you allocated $1 million for use for a public shelter, and then you augmented that with supplemental budget one in FY '19 with $900,000 for implementation of that Homeless System Services Report. So that's where that 1.9 million comes from. It's an important source of funding because so much of the community funding that's out there right now related to homelessness comes from grants or federal programs or other things that come with various restrictions, various reporting requirements. And so this allocation that you set out in advance represents a really key piece of funding that we're going to be presenting to you, provides us some flexibility as an organization on where to direct that, those funds. So at your, at your place, you have a table that gives you a sense of our overall organizational investment to homelessness. And so I want to walk you through this quickly. This is not really the focus for today. Again, it is really just to set the context. But as you can see in this table, and as you may recall from earlier work regarding this report, there are three main areas that our community is going to move forward with related to homelessness. And those are building out the perimeter, which is looking at outreach and diversion on one end, that's one side of the perimeter. The other is more the affordable housing, capital A, affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. And we have strengthening in the core, which I mentioned is sort of the core of the homeless services, the human services efforts. Much of that is Lane County. And then we have enhancing the rapid response, which are a lot of our emergency shelter options and emergency services. So as you can see, when you look at this list, and this list is organized by last fiscal year, this fiscal year, and a projection of FY '21. And I want to caution, that's just a projection, just to give you a sense of things. So that FY '19 was sort of the actual budgeted for FY '20. FY '21 includes funding potentially coming from the community safety effort. So that's, that's included in that as well. So you can see of all these different programs that the city is engaged with, all of them fall within rapid response or building out the perimeter. And that's important, again, because that's a niche, that's a great role for the city, and we don't need to work as much on strengthening the core because that's where Lane County lives. That's the work that they're doing, that's the work their best place to do. So again, in looking at the totals on this, you can see how the city's allocation towards homelessness is increasing over time. When you look at that FY '21 projection of around 8 million, if you think about the 1.9 million that you'll allocate today, spending that either in FY '20 or FY '21, you get closer to about a $10 million figure. When you think about adding in things like the Housing Trust Fund from the CET and other housing spending, you're getting up to around $15 million annually for your two top priority efforts, housing and homelessness. So making a big financial commitment, I will caution that the more we learn about housing and homelessness, the more we learn, as you probably know, the complexity of all of this and the difficulty in these sort of intractable issues that take a lot of time to happen, they take a lot of time for us to get out of, too. So while these investments are growing, it takes some time to affect a system as large as this. So we'll be talking more about outcomes in a little bit. So again, that's just an overview of our financial picture. So when you look at the recommendations staff are putting forward today, and you say, of this 1.9 million, why are we choosing here and why not over here? Part of the answer to that is that we are just a small piece of the overall funding within the community, and even the 1.9 million is just a small piece of our overall organizational spending. So keep that in mind as Peter walks you through the recommendations. So I want to turn it over to Peter, who's going to give you more details. And I'm going to give...
Thanks, Jason, Mayor, councilors. Before we get into the specific recommendations for allocating the 1.9 million, I wanted to remind us of a couple of things. First, the Homeless System Transformation Implementation Framework presented at the Joint Electeds Meeting on May 13th. This is a useful context for understanding how the recommendations for using the 1.9 million intersect with implementing tax recommendations. I also want to remind you of the year-one implementation goals the city and county set for ourselves. Some of these are already underway, most notably year-round operations at the dusk-to-dawn site. We're on track to begin construction of 51 units of permanent supportive housing at the Commons on MLK. And Lane County has hired a supervisor with the authority to unify local service providers around best practices and performance expectations, thereby strengthening system coordination. The city and county continue to collaborate on steps to deliver on the remaining year-one goals. As those collaborations unfold, we are clarifying strategic roles for the respective jurisdictions. As Jason mentioned, the Lane County is a Continuum of Care system administrator. The purpose of systems are to reliably allocate resources toward predictable outcomes. Their central focus is reproductive and making sure that everyone's on the same page. As a Continuum of Care administrator, it's critical that Lane County deploy resources towards system integrity so that stakeholders function in a seamless and coordinated fashion. The City of Eugene's role within the homeless service system is to plug holes, fill gaps, and creatively explore emerging possibilities. In short, to nimbly deploy flexible resources toward system enhancements, which can then be incorporated into the standing infrastructure as appropriate. Some of the ways the city has and continues to do this are listed on the slide. Dusk-to-dawn, car camping, community outreach response team, rest stops and cahoots are a few of those examples. With that, the 1.9 allocation is another embodiment of our positioning. With that in mind, I'll take you to the recommended distribution of that 1.9 million. As you can see, the recommended allocations fall into four buckets: a Strategic Initiatives Manager as our system transformation champion, a low-barrier emergency shelter, pilot mobile outreach program, and a pilot landlord engagement program. We'll look at these buckets individually in subsequent slides, but I wanted to show how the recommendations align with the System Transformation Framework, again, attachment C in your packet. You will also notice that we have recommended holding a portion of the 1.9 million in reserve as a contingency, thereby preserving our ability to respond quickly to emerging opportunities or needs. So on to our first bucket. The Strategic Initiatives Manager. There's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about. When I think about Eugene and homelessness, this quote really comes to mind. "Disparate voices with imperfectly aligned agendas clamoring for something different from what we currently have." The task for the Strategic Initiatives Manager is to knit those at-time discordant voices into a cohesive and actionable vision. They will be focused on system transformation and report directly to the city manager and county administrator. They will lead a collective impact model that expands traditional stakeholder groups. Certainly, the city, the county, nonprofit providers, and private sector partners have important experience and resources to contribute to our system's transformation. And if our efforts are to reach our aspirations, the unhoused must also contribute their expert knowledge to our evolving system. This position is currently up for bid on Lane County's website with proposals due by Friday, August 2nd. On to our second bucket, Low Barrier Shelter. In thinking about a low-barrier shelter, our priorities were threefold. Functionality, can it meet the identified need? Durability, can it do so for an extended period of time given operational and environmental demands? And flexibility, can it evolve along with our community's need? We consider traditional bricks-and-mortar buildings, prefabricated modular units, and sprung structures. In looking at these options, we believe that sprung structures offer the best combination of our priority criteria. So looking first at functionality. Sprung structures are functioning as low-barrier shelters and navigation centers around the country in environments as diverse as Minneapolis, Minnesota, Fresno, California, Honolulu, Hawaii, and many more. In conversations with public works, facilities, and program staff from various jurisdictions around the country, the structures are universally praised for their performance. They offer open floor plans, high ceilings, daylight panels. They're modular, they have an airtight building envelope for energy efficiency, and excellent Moving on to durability. These structures have a 50-year guarantee on the aluminum substructure or frame, a 25-year guarantee on the architectural membrane. They have all-weather durability, extreme cold, extreme wind, extreme heat. They're flame resistant, puncture resistant, and maintain their integrity over the long haul. There are examples of sprung structures which have been in service for 25 years with multiple uses, from resorts, gymnasiums, community centers, warehouses, garages, manufacturing facilities. They're used all over the place in a variety of, for a variety of uses. Moving on to flexibility. So the interior of sprung structures can be configured to provide office space, common rooms, dormitories, kitchens, storage, bathrooms, classrooms. I said they've been used as hotels, as community centers, as warehouses, as rest stops, as navigation centers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're really highly functional, highly functional, and have great flexibility. Given the modularity and mobility of sprung structures, they meet an existing community need and preserve the city's positioning as an agile complement to the necessarily more methodical action of the Continuum of Care system. Moving on to our third bucket, mobile teams. Our current outreach efforts are program and/or provider-driven, and consequently do not optimally access system-wide resources. Working with our partners at the county, local providers, and currently unhoused people, a pilot mobile team will trailblaze fruitful pathways for the system to incorporate as it evolves towards increased coordination. And finally, our fourth bucket, landlord engagement. This is a relatively modest proposal, but given housing is the end game for all of our efforts, we thought it would be important to explore opportunities to increase our affordable housing inventory in ways other than simply building more housing, which, not to denigrate building more housing, but we need to have a variety of strategies. And so currently, existing landlords are asked to contribute their investments into our system and are given the assurance that folks will receive adequate service when they're in their investment. And if anything goes wrong, we have a mitigation fund that can possibly pay for damages. Sometimes that isn't enough encouragement for folks to contribute their investment into the system. And so we thought maybe adding some front-end incentives might have a little more success getting some of the private sector to contribute to the system transformation project. So to recap, we recommend a Strategic Initiatives Manager to champion the system transformation project, a new low-barrier emergency shelter, a pilot project to invigorate homeless outreach, and a pilot project to recruit private sector landlords into the transformation project. We're hoping that y'all will approve the recommended plan for distributing the 1.9 million allocation. And with that, we'll take questions or comments or however that goes.
Great, thank you very much. That was very tightly done, thank you. So I have Betty, then Mike, then Claire. Go right, Betty.
Thank you. First, I'm concerned about the 1 million that we set aside for a shelter. I don't think that was for something temporary or movable. And I've been worried that that might disappear. I think that what was intended was a building. And a building doesn't move around, usually. Your tent or your movable thing would be a good supplement, but I'm really concerned if we're not sticking to, sometimes we pass a motion and it disappears, but that, the motion was the 1 million toward a shelter. I'm concerned about where the money's coming from, too. I'm glad that the county is getting involved, but it looks as if the county, I don't know whether they're contributing an equivalent amount of money or not. Also, I think we should be looking to have the state match our contribution. People move around, I just saw an email from someone who said he came here three months ago to be homeless, because we have good homeless services. And that's a risk we take, the better it gets, that people do move. And it should be a bigger, there should be shelters, but it should be bigger than a city. One city can't take care of everyone who comes here. And I'm not suggesting people go back where they came from, exactly, not what, not, well, never mind.
Subtle.
Yes, yes. That was a kind of a... And then, what do you mean by building out to the perimeter?
So that, that term relates to, building the perimeter is the better term, I think I said it incorrectly, but the edges of our homelessness system. So the very edges are helping folks to not enter homelessness in the first place. So that means diversion, connecting them with family, doing outreach, helping them with rent payments so they don't become homeless in the first place. So that's one, that's the perimeter, that's one edge. The other is the permanent supportive housing edge, the actual, like, housing end of things. And so what we try to convey with the concept of the perimeter and the center is that we spend a lot of time and a lot of energy around sort of those experiencing homelessness right now, but it's recognizing that there's a perimeter that becomes important, too, which is helping folks to not become unhoused in the first place and helping them get into housing and stay into housing. So it's a recognition that we need to be working at the core, but also at the perimeter.
Okay, I was thinking you meant the perimeter of the city or something.
Not a geographic...
No, preventing homelessness, in my opinion, is a really important thing, to help people with utility bills and with medical emergencies and that sort of thing. Let's see, does, does this, oh, I wanted more of an explanation of the incentives to landlords. Does that mean paying part of the rent?
So there are a variety of programs around the country that have proven to be successful in getting folks to contribute their property. You could have a sign-up bonus. So for example, if you're a landlord and you decide to make your, your housing available either as a rapid rehousing unit, as a move-on unit, or even permanent supportive housing, you would get a bonus, a payment for making your unit available. So that's one kind of incentive. Another kind of incentive is if you're a part of the program and somebody moves out, but you keep your program as part of the system and somebody, and make it available for somebody else coming in, you could get another bonus for doing that. And if you think about it, so that's $1,500, which is far less than creating a brand-new unit for one person moving forward. And so it's things like that. And then there are a few other examples. There's a bonus for not referring people to forcible, through a forcible eviction process. So there are a variety of incentives that seem to make sense. We're giving ourselves a year to think about that in more detail and are looking to implement that, not next year, but in FY '21.
So they couldn't just evict someone and then get another bonus?
Correct. That would be bad.
Yes. Does this, a question, does this proposed motion include expanding the areas of rest stops? I didn't see it there, but...
It does not, no.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report on this. Couple of questions. First one, what's the capacity of the shelter, overnight capacity?
So this one is, the numbers that are presented in this presentation are for 75 people.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Seventy-five.
A million nine for 75 people?
No. Eight-hundred-and-thirty-six for the structure and then building it out. So that would include HVAC, insulation, electrical, water, fire, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So 800,000 would purchase a structure and outfit it so that it, bring it up to code. It might, depending on the design, which I think would be an effort led by the Strategic Initiatives Manager, you may, I mean, it could go up from there, depending on site preparation, how big windows you want. I mean, so there are a variety of variables, but this would get the structure and make it, and get it up to code.
Awesome, thank you. There was a nice segue there, too. Speaking of location, where are we putting it?
I don't know. And that's, that's one of the, I mean, I think this, so my answer speaks to both your and Councilor Taylor's question. We need a shelter now, and we don't have an already-built...
Right.
...structure.
Isn't it a part of the appropriate policy debate? Isn't where an appropriate question in that debate?
It absolutely is.
So it's a part of if or whether to discuss where? I think that bears on that.
Absolutely.
And as a result, I don't, if we commit today that we're absolutely gonna, we're absolutely gonna do this, then it makes that, it changes that conversation in a way that I'm not comfortable with. I just want to be clear about that. I think this is a reasonable idea in a number of ways, but I, I'm not sold on our approach yet. Let's be generous and say it that way. I have another couple of questions for the city attorney. May, or does the, does the municipal court judge have the authority to compel someone to stay here?
Within the city limits?
Yep. In other words, may a police officer say, "You cannot be here, you must be there," and if he doesn't, may the judge compel that?
I'm not sure how to generally answer that in the abstract, but they're, I mean, they can have conditions of sentencing.
I mean, they can have conditions of sentencing. So, for example, they could have conditions of sentencing that you can't go back to a business that you've victimized and things like that. So are there abilities for the judge, when there is a sentence involved, to add conditions of sentencing? Yes, there are. That is within...
In other words, somebody might say, "Well, I get this is a low-barrier shelter, but there's some rules still that I'm not comfortable with and I don't like, so I'd prefer to sleep by the river than to comply with your rules. Thank you very much." May the judge, who issues someone a trespass ticket, say as a condition, "You must, if not..." You know, "If you don't have another organized residence, are compelled to stay here rather than be in violation on the river," for example.
Well, so I have never specifically looked at you are required to stay somewhere versus you will be committing another offense.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
I'm not comfortable answering that on the fly, other than I've never seen that before. So I would want to research that more specifically because now you're sentencing them to the shelter, and I'm not confident that that is actually within their purview. But I'm absolutely...
Could you please make sure I get a response? I asked another, by the way, another question a while ago on this topic, which is how much does... Are we spending as a system through private institutions as well so that beyond this budget, we see the St. Vinnie's budget, you know, shelter care budget and others, to see what on this topic we spend as a community a year? And I still would like to see that. Another question, similarly, may our municipal court judge or do they have the authority to involuntarily compel drug treatment as a condition of sentencing?
Again, I'm gonna have... I want to work with the judges on this before I get way out of my lane. So let me get you something in writing.
My problem has always been the same one, which is that I think there are many people who want to get well, many people who need help, and we ought to help them, and we ought to do everything we can to do that. But there are some folks who don't want to get well, and we don't do anything at all except enable them. And we need to change the system so it stops enabling people who don't want to get well. Otherwise, we're wasting time and money. We won't fix the actual problem, in my estimation. So, thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Thank you, city manager, for these recommendations. I think they're right in line with what we've been talking about this whole time. I do think it's important if we could get a follow-up information on Lane County's budget allocation towards their pieces of this work. I think that would be very helpful. On the sprung structure, so I was, I think, the budget committee member who made sure that million dollars would be dedicated to building a public shelter, not just providing shelter. So I was very clear, I wanted some kind of facility built to provide a public shelter option, one that we don't have in this community. In the steering committee meetings, and Peter and the city manager will remember this, where we discussed how to establish our public shelter using that million dollars, I was initially very suspicious of the idea of the sprung structure over a brick-and-mortar building. But I've since come around in my thinking. I think that the sprung structure might actually be a better option for us than concrete and steel. We've seen with our discussions around City Hall how a concrete and steel facility, the cost of that can start to be way out of whack with one's budget. So I think the cost, the ability to put it up very quickly once we have found a suitable location, and the ability to modify it internally, the inside of the building, to meet changing needs over time, because some of this is going to be experimental on our part, I think all speaks to the idea that this sprung structure is, I think, a good way to go. I don't think the intention is for it to be mobile or to be moved at any kind of frequency. I think the idea is to find a location, establish it there, that's the facility, that's our public shelter, that's where it stays as long as it's serving its purpose. And I think... I will need a second round. I think doing it this way may actually give us more money to enhance the facility in ways that would benefit those who are using it. I had suggested to the city manager that we might want to arrange a delegation to visit another community where they are using this kind of structure for this purpose. I think it would help build our confidence that this approach is a good one and one that meets the intention of the budget committee motion. And lastly, on this particular piece, I will say I believe we have already made a commitment to build this shelter as a council through that budget committee motion. And the question of where it is located is very important, but I don't think that should have to be answered prior to appropriating funds to build it since we already said we were going to. And I'll wait for my second round.
Great. Chris?
Thank you. Fortunately, Claire said a lot of what I was gonna say, so I get to use my three minutes. So thank you for doing that. I completely agree that I don't view this structure as being temporary or movable. I see this as a permanent structure. And the benefits of it not being brick-and-mortar are that the incredible flexibility that it will provide. I do think that having the navigation component is critically important. I don't think you want to just house 75 people. I've always thought that trying to provide support is an important part of whatever it is that you do, so I think that's a really critical, important piece. We've been talking about doing this now for going on two years. And to me, it's not about the money. To me, it's been about the location. And I think by saying we are committed to spending the money, it really lights a fire underneath us to work more diligently to find a location. Because I think it would be very easy to say, "Oh, well, we can't find a location, I guess we can't build it." This way, we're saying we want to be a lot more deliberate and we want to really work to find that location because we have the money and the will to do it. So I think we should really, really do it that way and work on it. I did want to talk a little bit about the landlord incentives piece because I think that is something that gets overlooked because there is an enormous amount of housing stock already built. It's already here. It's just out of the reach of people who could otherwise take advantage of it. And I think coming up with ways to bring that existing stock within the reach of people who could use it is an extremely smart and cost-effective strategy to use. So I think the landlord incentives you mentioned are a great start. I think there's maybe some other ones that we can really work on. And I think we should be very, very proactive and aggressive about figuring out ways to bring some of that existing housing stock more within the reach of people who can afford it. I know, for example, that Section 8 voucher holders, these are people who have the money in their hands to rent a place, are on a waiting list that's enormously long because they can't find a place. So once again, it's not a question of the money, it's a question of the location, the place. And I think we need to come up with some strategies, not only to create new housing, which is expensive, but to also take advantage of the existing stock that we have so that we can be doubly effective in both areas. So I'm fully supportive of what you want to do here. I think it's great. If we don't have every single question answered or every single detail worked out, I'm confident that as we continue to demonstrate that we have the will to do it, we'll answer those questions. We'll keep pushing through and get it done.
Jennifer?
Thank you. I would also like to see, come back with what the county's doing and how it intersects with what we're doing. I'm assuming they're still working on that probably, so when that's available. I actually think that the sprung structure is a very creative solution. It fits within the funds that we have. It's realistic for taking what we need and the money that we've got and doing something within a reasonable timeline, instead of having to wait years and years for, you know, an actual bricks, you know, structure. So I think that's great, and we will figure out the location. I think I agree with Chris, that we will work that out. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit on operation, because obviously, if we have this great thing, it will not matter if we cannot operate it, and that is blank. So I'm wondering if you have some thoughts on that?
That's really tricky, and it will be design-dependent. And so is it an emergency shelter with minimal programming happening in there? Is it an emergency shelter with a navigation center? So that would be a variable that would impact operations. Is it a large dormitory with bunk beds that is relatively easier to supervise than a more subdivided space? And so I just didn't really feel comfortable putting any numbers in there until we have a design. And I think that that design should be influenced by the thinking and experience of folks who are unhoused, and we're just beginning those conversations now. So that's where I'm at.
So that's something you're seeing the strategic initiatives manager working on.
Right.
Yeah. Also, I think Betty brought up a very good point, that prevention is very critical in all of this. So I'm wondering, is that something that fits into this reserve contingency fund? Because the way I read that, to me, it sounds like it does not, it would not, but...
So the reserve contingency fund, for me, and I'm relatively new to this, but one of the things that I've experienced in my short time is that it is so important to have money to dive at something that is promising. And so in my mind, that could be really anything. It also... What you're talking about could also fit within the purview of a mobile outreach team that has its own set of flexible funding. And so one of the things that I'm learning is that as you're out talking to folks, the things that might push them into homelessness are kind of small. "I need a repair on my car," or "I lose my car, I lose my job, I lose my house." And so there are a variety of places where what you're talking about fits within this recommendation. It could be that 279,000. It could be a piece of the 200,000 that's connected to the mobile outreach teams.
Okay, yeah. So I would prefer if that was spelled out somewhere so that we know that there are funds that can be accessed for prevention, because it seems like maybe that's not clear enough.
Jennifer, there's also, as part of the Community Safety Initiative, which is different than this funding, there are prevention and early intervention kinds of funding as well that will overlap or intersect with this at the same time, so we can highlight some of those additionally.
So you feel like maybe that is covered?
There... We could always use this much prevention and probably this much, but there's much more prevention capacity built into the 1.9 and the Community Safety Initiative than we've had in the past, so...
Okay, great. Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, thank you for this. This is really good work. I think this plan that you've laid out, this draft plan, actually follows the TAC report and has the same priorities. I think the TAC had the right priorities and the right items in it. Really good to see that they're in peril and that we used that information since it was an excellent report. I think one of the important things to remember out of the TAC report, one of the things that it said was a homeless shelter had zero impact on reducing homelessness, zero. It wasn't an effective tool in reducing homelessness. And what they recommended with staff's help was, instead of a bricks-and-mortar shelter, was a low-barrier 75-bed shelter, which is what we are lacking in our system. And that helps people transition. It's not a permanent place for them to be. It's a transitional place with the services and things. The other thing I keep in mind is that, and I've said this many times, a brick-and-mortar shelter is the most expensive way to deal with this issue. It's probably the least cost-effective way for us to deal with homelessness than there... And so that is not the best way to proceed. I think what you guys have come up with in this sprung structure is very clever, very creative, and thinking about it in a different way, and it's much more cost-effective. Eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, how many square feet is it?
I think that's 5,200. I'll have to have that right in front of me.
And then, so plus the furnishings and the interior stuff, so we'll figure that out, too. So the... I think it is going to be permanent. Once we cite it, we're never gonna be able to move it because it's gonna be difficult just to get there. So... And I've been in similar structures. They feel like buildings. They don't have any differential to me. I've been in many of them before. So I think it's a better option, offers us more flexibility, it's lower cost, it's more cost-effective. Basically, it's a really smart idea. So the tough part is going to be deciding that people have already done. So we'll get to that, though, and I think we'll be able to overcome that as well. I think the initiative manager is an absolute must-have. It's an essential ingredient of successful programs is that someone is the point person, someone's in charge. If everybody is in charge, no one's in charge. So this is going to be the point person to help do this, and there's lots and lots of stuff to figure out and to do. So it's gonna be a really exciting position, probably get a slew of people doing it. And also, the county's helping pay for a part of it, splitting the cost of that, so that's even better. And then, mobile outreach is excellent. Years ago, when I helped create the Safe and Sound Program for downtown at-risk homeless youth, one of the things we figured out was they weren't gonna come in, we had to go to them. So we hired two outreach people. That worked exceptionally well. This does the same thing. The landlord engagement is part of the TAC report, keeping people in their homes, keeping them in that low income, and working with the landlords and working with them is really important. And I think the reserve fund, 300,000 almost, is... We find ourselves always needing to respond, so that's a smart thing. One last question related to the table.
You're gonna need a second round.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Emily?
Thank you very much. This has been a lot of work for a long time. I think the spring structure is really interesting, but it's kind of a new concept to me. I heard it mentioned a few weeks ago, and I'm having a hard time getting to like it, although there's certainly a ton of reasons for it to be an excellent idea. And I think the reason for that is I've never seen one. I've never been in one. It sounds like we're gonna put up a 50-year tent, and I'm like, gross. So I think that's a disadvantage to me, that this information wasn't fleshed out a little more before this meeting, because I would like to know what some of the homeless people feel about it, and I don't think they have any more information than I do. Now, sleeping on the ground or sleeping in this structure, I'm going to this structure. So although I'm not initially enamored of the idea, I'm certainly seeing a ton of advantages and will probably be in favor of it, but it would be a lot easier if I knew more about it. I assume that this cost includes plumbing for bathrooms and laundry and the cots and is there gonna be...
No, this is not interior furnishings, but it has utilities, so electrical, HVAC, fire suppression, those kinds of things. You can build out, but again, I didn't... The contractor who provided us with these estimates really felt like he needed the design before he could add those estimates into the price tag.
That's some information I find to be very, very critical, you know? If it's $200,000 for some cots and sheets and... I don't remember, is there any kitchen in this? Or is it 800,000? You know, this makes a really big difference to me because we're talking about 1.9 and...
Well, so to give you an example, San Francisco, I spoke to folks in San Francisco and San Diego. And San Francisco, they purchased a building that I think was... Or a sprung structure that was 10,000 square feet, and their price, their purchase price was, I think it was 800,000, and the final build cost 4.4 million. San Diego bought a similar structure, and their final price was 1.7 million. And so there's huge variability in the final cost based on the design. And so I think what we need to do is wait for the SIM to work with the community around what an effective design is, and then...
Where are we thinking we'll get this money? Because it's not in the 1.9. So how long is it gonna take to get this structure? We've got people applying by the second. How long until we hire them? How long to actually get the tent? We may never find a place to put it. How long to find, get the beds in there? When are we seriously thinking about using this shelter? Because I've been told it's part of this winter's strategies. Is that realistic?
So the key piece is finding the location. Really, that's always been the key piece. And then once...
And we've always been working on it, and we haven't found one. So we got all these plans, but it might be, what, two years till we get a location? I'm really frustrated by putting all this money out in front of any possibility of it really happening. So I don't know. I'm still in favor of this, but not having a site first, it's making me kind of dubious. Not having the money to furnish it is making me kind of dubious. Where's the navigation center? Is maybe part of this building or maybe not part of this building? Since the navigation center has been told more important than a shelter, I'm wondering why that's not separated or higher on the list. And I'm gonna need a second round.
Okay. I don't know if there are any answers.
I don't know if there are any answers.
So, in my mind, our community needs a combination of facilities that meet three functions: shelter, navigation center, and a day center, all of which we're struggling to find a location. And really, that's unacceptable. We need to find a location, and I share your frustration around that and the sense of urgency around that. We all know finding a spot is difficult, and we may find a spot that works as a navigation center, or works as a day center, or works as an emergency shelter. The advantage of the sprung structure is that it can fill in and complement whatever site we do find for whatever function we identify, the sprung structure can complement that. So if we find a day center, navigation center, then we have a sprung structure that can be an emergency shelter. If we find an emergency shelter navigation center, then we might have a sprung structure that's a day center. For me, that's the advantage of having something that's as eminently flexible as this. You're right, we have to find a place. And, you know, if I knew what that place was, I would tell you, I promise.
Okay. Are you done?
I think I was out of time.
Okay, good. I have three councilors in the queue. I just, yeah, I've got you, I've got you. Oh, well, okay. Yeah, I got you, I got you. Don't worry, I got you. Claire, Alan, Emily, and Mike, okay? And Betty. Okay. All right.
So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say one thing, and do want to watch the time on this, is just a reminder that, to reiterate what Claire said, is, as a council, you've already made a commitment to do this work, and you've already dedicated the funds to do this work. And at the, after the Budget Committee, the question was, okay, now what's it going to look like? So this is really your opportunity just to give a green light to proceed conceptually with the idea that you are going to put money into a sprung structure, that you're going to put money into a Strategic Initiatives Manager, into the outreach, and into the landlord support. It's a, you're approving a concept, you're not approving the specifics yet, because we're not there yet. So, the goal all along, and I think a priority with the Steering Committee, was that we move fairly quickly, that we not say to the public, "Okay, we've agreed on this, but it's going to be two years before you see anything." The goal was that we would, that people would see progress. So, not wanting to get too lost in later details that prevents us from sort of giving a green light to proceed and explore this more deeply. So with that said, Claire, then Alan, Emily, Mike, Betty.
Thank you.
So, Peter, on the sprung structure question, I'm wondering if you could provide the council with the information from one of the manufacturers that was shared at the Steering Committee meetings? That might help in kind of rounding out our understanding of what that structure actually is. On the navigation centerpiece, I thought the county was working to start something out at the Highway 99 site in terms of navigation.
So expanding what's happening at St. Vincent's, while they are doing that. I don't have the details.
That's okay. On the mobile teams, do we envision this being accomplished through a social service provider, or would they be city employees or county employees?
So, we're working out a little bit the details for that. You know, I think Jason alluded to, one of the advantages for our funding is that it's not tied up with grant funding, essentially, so there's a lot of freedom. And what happens with existing social providers, social service providers and their outreach teams, they tend to recruit for, or outreach for their programs, and their programs may have all kinds of eligibility requirements. You know, the city is not really in the business of providing social services, and so in an ideal world, it would be a provider that's doing outreach, as long as they're able to scan for resources system-wide and are not tied solely to the programs or resources that that provider has in-house.
I see, yeah. And I am assuming, and so just to check this assumption, that the Strategic Initiatives Manager would have some role in helping us coordinate that outreach so that it's as effective as possible. If that's not the idea, I'm making a suggestion that it be...
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things. A strategic outreach manager, we focused on getting the shelter up and going, and 350 units of public, or permanent supportive housing, that's going to be the primary two pieces. The mobile teams will be in concert also with the county and us in trying to maximize their use, so the SIM will not be...
Necessarily focus on that. But coordination is key here, so just, that's an important theme. Landlord engagement, so again, I know there's some funding that some of our social service providers have for landlord engagement, so I'm encouraging to make sure that that's all coordinated, we're not overlapping. And would that, but is the idea that that would be something managed by the city and no?
No. We're in conversations with somebody who has far more expertise in this world than we do, and we haven't finalized who that, I mean, what it looks like, and so, so I'd like to wait to communicate that publicly.
On Councilor Clark's questions around a judge being able to sentence someone, I'm interested in hearing the answer to those questions, too. When I used to work for the ACLU of Oregon, I did hear complaints that people were often released from Lane County Jail with the condition that they go stay at the mission as a condition of their release, and the complaint was that it was a faith-based organization, and they did not adhere to that faith, and they felt was violating their freedom of religion. So I just, also, just as kind of a bigger-picture thing, so HS, the Human Services Commission funds a lot of programs that are aimed directly at preventing people from falling into homelessness, so let's, just because we're focused on these pieces right now, don't forget that that other work is being done. And prevention was embodied in some of the other pieces of the TAC report that spoke to the need to shore up, pieces of our current social service provisions such as diversion, which is the idea that someone might show up at the shelter and say, "I need a bed," but a case manager sits down with them and actually recognizes they have other resources that they can draw upon and don't need that shelter bed after all. And sometimes that's going back to their landlord and working out an agreement, or paying some, you know, fine that they had with the landlord. And so, our landlord support had interact with that. And the Strategic Initiatives Manager, in the film Tony about homelessness, touched on many of the same interventions that the TAC report recommended, and they interviewed a person in there who I think led Utah's efforts to end homelessness, and then I believe he was hired by another community to help them with their work. And so, there are experts out there who have successful track records in implementing similar efforts. So, you know, I think there, I have confidence that we will find someone of similar skills.
Alan?
Yeah, on the landlord engagement, I think one of the things that we're going up next week is talking about our prioritization of the construction excise tax monies. And I think a lot of areas that I want to see happen with that money involve keeping people in their houses instead of getting them out into homelessness will help with our affordable housing crisis. And so, this would complement that, correct? Or, and it could, we could supplement it even if we needed to with some of that monies.
Yes.
Okay. So there's other ideas floating around in that space that we need, that we'll talk about in that discussion next week. On the table you guys provided, great, I helped start this table when City of Santa Cruz called up, and I knew somebody who I worked with before who was involved in doing a homelessness task force for the City of Santa Cruz, and they had heard that the City of Eugene had their act together with regard to homelessness, and so they called us to figure it out. And I'm going, "You called us? Oh my God, if we're the people that have our act together, the rest of the world is in big trouble." But apparently, we actually, after I went through and just laundry listed all the things we were doing, they were stunned that we were doing all this stuff. And that's kind of where this table came from and helped filling it out. Does this cover everything that we're doing in terms of the homeless? I mean, some of them are zeros, because we don't have one, but like the Opportunity Village...
In terms of the city, I would say yes, it does. I mean, there's some question about how, some of our programs and how you define whether or not they're related to homelessness or not. There are some programs that might be on the edges that aren't quite here, but we tried to be pretty liberal with our interpretation of a program related to homelessness. So this captures, confident in saying this captures the bulk of it.
Yeah, so it's $5.7 million a year, which is, you know, half of that is actually federal monies coming in. So, we're contributing quite a bit on a local level, but there are a lot of things that we're doing, and it's nice to see it in one place, finally. I think that's all the questions that I had.
Great. Emily?
Thank you. As, not really an aside, but the movie Tony is being shown tonight at the Park Blocks. I think it's 7 o'clock. You can gather a little bit beforehand, and there will be a dis...
That is a movie. The movie is...
Has to be dark.
Oh, duh. Well, that, that's...
All right. Okay. Okay, okay.
7 o'clock, Park Blocks. The temporary shelter in the first one and then the durable shelter, it sounds like the sprung structure could end up being the permanent shelter. So, but before we talk about maybe having a three-year temporary while we worked on a permanent, it's kind of gushy right now what's happening, or we don't know yet.
Well, I think this is, this is one of the areas where sprung structures make particular sense, right? Because if things look different in a year, or in two years, in three years, and we say, "Well, this doesn't work," then we can, it will have served a purpose as we move on to something that we think works better. My sense, based on all of the conversations that I've had, is that it will work, and so, my feeling is that it could very easily become the permanent structure. The other piece I just want to remind folks is council set aside $1 million for the shelter, and outside of a sprung structure, that was never going to cover the entire cost of putting a shelter. Right. And so, I guess I saw some balking when I was relaying, "Well, that figure that you have in front of you is kind of a bare bones, let's get it up and have something that's relatively functional. Price may change based on the design, at which point, we or the county may be looking for additional resources." But that, in my estimation, was always going to be a part of the plan. And so, I just want to say that as I saw people go...
Emily, what I'd also say, when you see this blue chart here, the very first part of Temporary Shelter Nav Center, that's recognizing that the dust of dawn needs to continue and won't be shut down, and that the idea is, is as the entire package of recommendations are implemented, the intent is that the dust of dawn will decrease in number as the rest of the system takes hold. And so, that first line item recognizes that dust of dawn will continue, which is part of the Community Safety Fund.
So temporary shelter is dust of dawn, and durable shelter is the shelter, and I got them confused.
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. But I did think we were taking three years to make the shelter shelter. If we can do it in one year, that's great. The $1 million, my understanding, was before the county and state helped with a feasibility study. It was to do that, it was to look for locations and get some design work started. That we could do the whole thing, which we can't, because we need to furnish it, is awesome, but I wonder, you know, that wasn't the original plan. I still, not right now, would like to know how much other building types were looked at, and, you know, just a little bit of the pros and cons. Are we going to buy this before we have the location? And then, do we have a garage to put it in? Are we gonna buy the cots before we get the location? Or we could design what's in it before we get the location? What's the reality on actually getting a location?
We need to get a location.
Are we going to buy the tent first?
My hope is that we get a location relatively soon.
Good luck. The manager, for $525 for three years, that includes benefits, and, you know, I'm making 16, this seems like a lot of money to me.
So it's a contract that's out for bid, and it actually might be a group of people and is all-inclusive, so, you know, this is an outcome-driven contract? Get it done, and here's what you have to do it with.
And how long do you think before they would start working for us?
So, the projected start is September of this year?
I would say that it's not necessarily true that we're paying $175,000 for that contract. This is the amount of money that could go towards that and part of that rest of that function, so...
Okay. The people line, that's not the manager person, that's extra.
Correct.
The landlord thing, I'm really into keeping people housed. I'm not really understanding why a landlord would all of a sudden get generous enough to donate a unit or units, and, you know, for no rent, or just a little incentive to have that home.
So there are successful programs around the country where that has proved to increase affordable housing stock.
I really like the contingency fund. I think that that's a really good idea, and I want that even if we don't do anything else. So, this is really complicated. I like a lot more of it than I thought I was going to. I'm feeling supportive of it. I'd really like to not vote till next week, just so I could get some input from people who are affected by it, because it's pretty new to me, and so, it's brand-new to them. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is great transition. Mr. Manager, why is it important that we make, that we vote on this motion today?
A couple of things. One is, from a SIM perspective, we can't hire, get into a contract with somebody unless you've actually committed dollars. And so, until those dollars are committed, that puts that on pause. So I would, at a minimum, I suggest we do that today. I do think with the rest of the program, there's a, we still want to continue to move down the road in an expeditious manner and in an urgent manner. And I think what we've all recognized is we just need to keep moving. And so, it allows the SIM to come on board, allows that person to immediately start looking for locations, start taking a look at what would the design of a structure look like, and all of that.
I understand the imperative and the importance of bringing the, you know, the entire Strategic Initiative Manager on right now. That's fine. I could vote in favor of that. But I voted at budget in favor of the $1 million, because at that level, that was my commitment to having a low-barrier structure, and I'll save you the discussion of what low barrier means operationally today. But my guess is it involves medical personnel on staff, on-site, probably, right?
I would say we don't know yet.
Right. So, we don't know the operational budget of the thing, we don't know the soft costs, and we don't know how much it'll cost to build it out. We don't know where it's going to go, and we don't know where our partners are going to interact well with this. Alan is right, this is a plan that we're voting on, and it's one that's not complete yet. It's not close to complete enough for us to vote on the rest of it. I agree with you that the SIM should be put in place to lead the effort, but I'm nowhere near ready to vote on the pieces that are just unanswered questions at this point and commit large dollars to something that may end up, well, you know, it looks like a fine opportunity to me, it looks like a great idea, there's a lot of this I like. But without the context of the rest of it, I don't know that it's the right thing for us to do right now. It could be, and in which case, I'd be happy to do it. I've already voted in favor of the $1 million, because I think we need to do it. But I'm not sure this is the right part of the plan until more of the plan, and it doesn't have to be everything and completely flushed out, but it does need to be more. So I'll vote against all of that, but I would vote in favor of the idea of putting the manager in place. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. Once more, Mike and I are together. What's going to happen?
Alan, say something, Mike, Betty.
I didn't think the $1 million would be all, but I, with my intention, and it still is, is it not be used for anything except a shelter. As far as being enough to build something, when you buy a house, sometimes you don't build it, you buy a used house. There are buildings that we could buy, the old LTC building, for example, would have a lot of what's needed for a shelter, a day shelter as well as beds, and places to take showers, and places to do laundry. And it's downtown where it ought to be. There's, and Emily has pointed out another building...
There are buildings that we could buy, that the old LTC building, for example, would have a lot of what's needed for a shelter. A day shelter as well as beds and places to take showers and places to do laundry. And it's downtown where it ought to be. There's, and Emily has pointed out another building available across from the downtown liquor store that might be suitable, either for a single-room occupancy building or a shelter. So we could look at things like that and I, I think we need, I do think it needs to be downtown because all buses come downtown, services are near downtown, and it's nice to have a central place that also would alleviate the concerns of people who don't want people sleeping on the streets downtown if they had an inside place downtown. An inside place to be during the day and to have social service people come to talk to them. A place to have coffee or tea or whatever they drink. See, city manager style, they could have tea. But, and I'm wondering if we have a manager, if that might reduce the need for all the social service agencies and some of the money that we give to them. Because I, I do think there's a lot of overlap in services and I think it's good to have a navigation manager, someone who looks at where, where people are getting services and where they need them. And we don't need a lot of high-paid directors of a lot of different agencies, perhaps. I can imagine the reaction to that. But I have one more thing here. Guess that's the main thing. I'm, I'm really concerned about the overlap of services. And I think this tent, this fancy tent you're talking about, would be very nice to have for lots of things, but, but supplemental thing rather than the original. I remember when the mission, which has stayed in the same place, look at the time, said they had never turned anyone away, and that's no longer true. I know because the problem has grown, partly because people come here for services, whether you like to think that or not. But it does, I think there needs to be a place that, a permanent place. And that I hope it wouldn't be, I hope it would be temporary for the people to stay there, but not temporary in existence. Thank you.
Okay. I'm calling time on this because we have 20 minutes left in the meeting and I would encourage council to vote today on this, to move forward with a reminder that these are recommendations. It allows staff to move forward in their own exploration, in discussions with the county. This is not your only opportunity to discuss this or vote or hear about this. So I think what we're really looking forward for is forward progress so the work continues and a, and a green light from council to continue the work. So I am going to ask Betty to put the motion on the table.
Well, okay, I don't have to vote for it, but I'll-
Here. I'll have a-
I wanted to say something again, too.
Okay. Okay. Well, it's time.
I'll make the motion, then we, then we can have comments, maybe. I move to adopt the staff recommendations outlined in Attachment A.
Second.
Okay. I have Alan, Mike, and Betty needing to make comment. Alan first.
I was in the last queue.
Yay.
This is a budget plan. It, it is very well thought out, I think. It has all the essential parts of it. But as with every budget, this is, this is an allocation authorization of a spending plan for dollars with some of the details they figured out, just like our annual budget every year. Not every single detail in that budget is, is completely flushed out when we pass the budget. Following the logic of not voting for this because every single T is not crossed and I is dotted, you should never vote for a budget. And so, which is a spending plan as opposed to an actual thing. That's why we have professional staff and that's why I have a professional city manager to figure out those details and implement our policy direction, which is, these are the right areas, these are the right priorities, bring back the details for us when we need, when we, when you get them. So go forward and, and, and fulfill this, this vision, this plan. And so with that, I'm going to vote for this because I think it's way time to move forward on this.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I, at the end, the last thing I said, I said, we don't need to know all of those things. We only need to know some considerable questions that still remain in order to avoid that straw man argument that, you know, we need to know every detail. Because we don't. You're right. But we need to know a great deal more than we know today before we're ready to vote with this much money. So in, in light of that, there are two things on here that aren't determined, at least from what I can see, on having a location or having a tent set up and operating. And for me, that's the Strategic Initiative Manager and the Pilot Landlord Engagement Program, which that person can begin to do. And I'm in favor of making forward progress, but the other things require further development of a plan before they're ready. So I move to substitute for approving the Strategic Initiative Manager's portion of this Attachment A and the Pilot Landlord Engagement Program portion of this. Which altogether is 585,000. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Betty. The, the part that purchases the structure for nearly a million dollars, I've already spoken to that we don't know enough about what that's going to cost. It could cost a third of buying the entire E-Web administration building, for crying out loud. And what he mentioned that they spent in San Francisco, we don't know what that number is yet. And the mobile outreach teams have to have more in the way of this facility set up in order for them to operate. And so there's no reason to do that yet, nor to have the reserve until we're farther down the road. I'm happy to vote on these things next week with further information about what the build-out will cost, what will the soft costs be, and what are the operational costs. But until then, we're committing to a course that we have no idea what it'll cost.
You won't know all of that next week because we have no way of knowing what the design, full design needs to be until there's a lot more work. And so I would say we wouldn't be able to come back with an expectation that you will know all of that next week.
Well, I'm not as interested in looking good, like we're actually doing something, until we're prepared to actually do something. And we're not yet. So if it means we don't move until after summer break, then that's what it means. If it means maybe we should all come back for a special meeting during summer break, that's fine with me, too. But I'm not willing to commit millions of the public's money until we have more information about how it's going to be spent, so.
Okay. Did you want to speak to Mike's motion?
I wanted to speak on, if I speak down, it has to be on the substitute motion, right?
Yes, right.
No, that's not what I want to speak on.
All right. So all in favor, all in favor of the substitute motion?
Okay.
Opposed? All right, that goes down. Okay. Betty, now you can speak.
Okay. Now, I, I wanted to say that because we spent a lot of money on the tax group to tell, give us advice, does not mean that we have to follow their advice. We should consider it. But I, I think it would have been better if we had a local group to start with, but we should consider it, not necessarily follow it all. And I do think that we need to consider the possibilities of, I, I think the location is just essential. And I, it won't get any easier than it is now. And I've just mentioned two possible locations downtown, which is where I think it should be. But I will have to vote against the motion as it is.
Okay. One more comment and then we're voting.
Do we get, do we get to look at, what, this location part, I think, is, is really critical. And do we get to choose the location? I mean, we will have said we're going to buy the tent and everything and it's in the garage. Do we get to choose where or now that we have the tent, are we going camping?
There will be much more conversation about location, I suspect, even before we go buy a tent, because the style of the tent might make a difference depending on the location. But, so that has to happen. The, the, finding a location is not going to take two weeks. It'll take longer than that to actually do that. What I do think this does is it says, we're committed to this kind of a shelter for all the right reasons that we've talked about here, which makes a difference as opposed to a bricks and mortar. It could be a different kind of location, depending on what the structure actually is. So there will be much more conversation around location and we're, you're not going to wake up one day and see a sprung structure and not have any idea that that's where the location was. We'll be spending a lot more time on that conversation.
Good idea there, Mr. City Manager. We, if we allocate all this money, we're going to spend it? I mean, if we're going to spend it, whether it's on these things, are they, is the money being divided up for each thing or can we wiggle it around?
So ultimately, what will happen is if there are things, it might cost that exact amount, it might be a little bit different, and so some of that will come back. So this is the plan that says, this is the intent to spend this amount of money on this particular item. It may turn out that $10 needs to shift between each of those and we're happy to come back and have all those conversations as we would think about doing that.
But we wouldn't take the 60,000 for the landlords and dump it into the outreach team, just like that?
That's correct. What, what you're saying here is this is the priority, this is the plan, and so we would follow this plan. That would be our intent to follow.
Great. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. I'm ready and hope you're ready for a vote. All in favor of the recommendations, moving forward, recommendations, one, two, three, four, five, six, opposed, two. Thank you very much. Thank you for your good work and, and thorough answers to our questions. And I do apologize for running so late on the next item, but I think we'll proceed.
Yes, I think we can get started on that and then-
Right.
Kind of see where we go.
Okay.
Pick it up if we need to next week.
I would-
Get started as soon as I need to.
You guys know how to clear a room.
Yeah.
Ouch. That's pain, Alan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to speak really fast. This may be the shortest session I've ever been part of.
Go for it.
I'm Mike Kennison, Community Development, and I'm here with Gabe Flock from our Planning Division and Will Doughty from Community Development. The purpose of our work session today is to consider a package of land use applications necessarily to implement the council-approved concept plan for the downtown riverfront redevelopment. That's our first, is that a work?
Turn it off and on.
Am I doing wrong, Elena? Oh, is it not on? That'd be great. Okay. Well, the slide that you're about to see is the approved concept plan for the downtown riverfront redevelopment. That should look familiar to you. You've seen that a number of times at the table here. As you recall, there are land use policies specific to implementing the vision of the 2010 E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. The approved downtown riverfront concept plan that we're looking at is built on that vision, but with some differences that necessitate code amendments to allow the current plan for the riverfront to move forward. We're here today to make sure you understand the content of the code amendment package, answer any questions you may have. We were set up today to take action, but given that our time constraints, we also have a meeting on Monday scheduled, so there's no real pressure today to get through everything. Second slide, please. Thanks, Elena. I think before we get started and talking about the details of the land use applications, we just wanted to take a moment to remind ourselves, kind of how does this fit in to the overall process? While the current work around getting the land use package ready was about a year in the making, we've actually had multiple years in getting to this point, starting with the adoption of the E-Web Master Plan, entering into negotiations with our developer partners, Williams and Dame, to the agency board approving the terms with Williams and Dame, including the concept plan and initiating the land use code amendment process. And I just wanted to point out that we're currently in our due diligence period as part of the development and disposition process. And the land use code adoption package is one, one of the conditions set forth in the So in terms of our current process for the land use code package, council initiated that in July a year ago. We've had multiple meetings with the Planning Commission. One of those involved a public hearing where we walked through all the details of that package. It was robust conversation there and input by the Planning Commission. And that concluded in a unanimous recommendation for adoption with several recommended, recommended changes to the proposed code language for the downtown riverfront special area zone. Those changes were summarized in a memo to you in June and are incorporated into the ordinance as Attachment A today. Council also held a public hearing on the land use package on June 24th, in which three speakers testified in support with no opposing testimony. And council has also received a letter from the Historic Review Board in relation to rezoning of property north of Fourth Avenue. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gabe. He's going to talk a little bit more in detail about the content of the land use applications. And Will is going to close us out in covering some of the next steps in the overall process for the riverfront.
Thanks, Mike. So as I'm sure you've seen in the draft ordinance, we have a set of multiple land use applications that are rolled into the approval process. The, I think the majority of the significant changes relate to the code amendments. And so in essence, what we're doing is revamping the existing downtown riverfront zoning, which was originally adopted in 2013 for the E-Web site. And so as, following the approval by council of the concept plan, we worked closely with a team of consultants on, on part of the city, as well as architects and other Williams and Dame representatives to essentially look at all of the different regulatory components, both in the existing zoning and throughout the rest of the code, to help facilitate and, and poised the city to move forward in a relatively streamlined way with the, the construction development of the project. There are also refinement plan amendments and zone changes, which are included as part of the package that essentially are, are necessary and, and work together in a comprehensive way to bring consistency between the, the updated zoning and the concept plan and our existing adopted plans. I could get into more details about specific parcels, but in essence, I think it's important to recognize that the majority of the site is already zoned downtown riverfront and that action was taken originally in 2013. And so this is a refinement of that and it does include additional parcels north of Fourth Avenue that are in the Whittaker Plan area. And so that is part of the formal action that we need to take in order to facilitate the package. We also have other application types that wouldn't normally come to council, but we thought that it was really important to look at this in a comprehensive way so that we could see all of the parts of the puzzle and how they're integrated together. These are perhaps more detailed than, than actions you might normally see in an ordinance format. And we're happy to go into those details further if there are questions about it. But I think what it does do is as a package, it, it helps us look at the, the high-level policy questions and, and zoning code, all the way down to the details in terms of the Greenway Permit, the subdivision and the standards review, getting to lot layout, establishing street rights of way and, and at least conceptual approval for the infrastructure that's needed to, to get this project off the ground. Another, I think, critical component is the standards review, which is a necessary approval for the protected area adjacent to the river. And so it involves approval for the construction of the new riverfront park. And I'm sure you've seen those concepts as they've been developed in the public, sort of parallel public process to date. And so briefly, that, that is what the package includes. You've been presented with a full record of materials. We know the Planning Commission deliberated for, what, three meetings, up to six hours to get to their recommendation. And we've folded those recommendations into the draft ordinance so that it is ready for action, reflecting those changes if, if council chooses to move forward with that. Again, taken together, we think this represents all the necessary land use approvals and regulatory changes to help get this project moving from this point forward. And I realize there's a lot of information to digest in that package. So we're happy to answer any questions, whether they're high-level or detailed. In the interest of time, I'll turn it over to Will at this point.
Thank you. So they gave me one slide and I messed that up a little bit. But what I'm, what I'm supposed to do is explain that you've seen a couple of timelines and this is not the end of a timeline. This is a step in the middle and then there's many more things to be done. After all, what we're going for is a place where we can all physically be and enjoy a new development. So what is moving forward right now is just the grading and repairing enhancement. The mayor has already kicked that off and we are going to move forward with some, that site work and, and some work on the-
And so with the tentative subdivision and the standards review, with, if those, if those pass and those move forward, then we can start work on the park and the quiet zone in this winter. The last piece is also dependent on your action today or in the next few meetings. And then we'll also come back to you, that's the, the site infrastructure. It's, in addition to the actions presented in this packet, there's the, there's another opportunity later on with the local improvement district. So that will come back to you after the city opens bids to do the infrastructure work, come back for a public hearing. That would be late, late winter, early spring. So those are some of the pieces that are, are dependent on this and other things that are going to be moving forward at that time. So, Mike, is there anything else?
No, I think with that, we're just available to, for discussion, answering any questions that you have.
Okay. Before we even get into it, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend...
I move to extend 10 minutes to 1:40.
Do I have a second? All in favor of extending? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed, one. Sorry, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Okay. I have Alan in the queue, so take it away.
Yeah, this is a lot of work that's been going on for a while. And it was finally good to see it actually all in one place and be able to go through it and read it. The two concerns that popped up for me were related to elimination of the minimum setbacks in, in the code and, and whether or not we're going to have adequate parking. And I thank staff for sitting with me today and going through it in excruciating detail and asking, answering most of my questions and alleviating a small amount of my angst about this, but still pretty nervous about how this is all going to play out. So are they, for this, for that matter. On the elimination of minimum setbacks, my fear is that we'd not replicate what we did, what happened at Capstone, where we allowed buildings right up to the narrow sidewalks on 13th, for instance, and other places around there. And, and the way that the buildings were built, the way that, with the materials and the width of the sidewalk and all of that made those just look, that's a terrible example of development. And things are significantly different in this agreement and how they proceed with, and, and some of the concerns that I had were, are addressed in here, but I would want to see if we can't get, based on the conversation we had, a staff memo that explains kind of how we're not going to, how that's not going to happen, or what we're doing to make sure that that doesn't happen for, for our next meeting. And then the second fear is that this code is going to force us into having the city begin to build a multimillion-dollar parking structure to deal with the parking. The development itself builds its own parking, but there's the commercial parts of it, the park part of it, the, the plaza part of it, and, and the steam plant part of it, and all those things are going to put an amazing amount of parking pressure onto this. And, and so my fear is that we're going to be put in a position of having to spend millions of dollars to do that. At $50,000 to $60,000 a slot, we're talking, you know, 100, 100 slots is $6 million, 200 slots is $12 million of parking, which we don't have, and it's not in the plan. And, and so how are we going to deal with those issues, and what, what are we going to do to mitigate that? Fully cognizant of the fact that things are changing, and the demographics are changing. And like, for instance, Capstone built their parking on the interior and hit it, so most people don't even know it's there, but they, they basically overbuilt, and there's now like 100 slots in there that are now public parking because they overbuilt. So there's, there's a lot moving pieces, parts to this parking structure, and, including, you know, if we had to buy the bolt and build a structure, what's our, that could be a stranded asset. So if we could get a, a staff memo addressing those issues as well, that would be very helpful to me. And I think the rest of council.
Excuse me. Anybody else need to comment? Claire?
My question is just related to the purple piece on that slide. How is the, going forward with the railroad quiet zone implicated by whether or not we adopt this land use package?
The, I will, I think I know the answer to that, and if, if I'm wrong, then my colleagues behind me can fill in. But my understanding is that the Willamette Greenway Permit is modified a little bit in order to allow for the roundabout or the crossing at Eighth Avenue. And, and then I believe that may also be in the subdivision as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Oh, Betty?
I was about the quiet zone, too. Is that included in this motion that's proposed? I don't see it.
I, I would offer that, at least in terms of the land use regulations and the package before you, that there is no specific regulatory piece of this that, that either approves or relates in a direct way. I think what Will is describing is an indirect relationship to the design that's being essentially tentatively approved with the subdivision. In other words, where the street would be located, at Fifth Avenue and High Street, and, and at the south end of the project at, at Eighth and Hilliard, those, those two key locations relate to the railroad quiet zone crossings, but, but it's really the city's action to create those street rights of way. It does not guarantee or otherwise, I mean, if anything, it's a step toward the conceptual design that we intend to put forward for the railroad crossings.
Railroad quiet zone, the council's already approved moving forward on that, and already, we've already worked through the dollars for that. So that, that is, you've taken action to move forward the railroad quiet zone already.
Well, it's, we were told that we have, need to vote on that. I was confused.
Not the railroad quiet zone, there's some land use pieces that indirectly impact that.
We're permitting it. Okay. I'm still opposed to spending all the money on that, but I...
Right, right. Yeah, no, that's...
Okay. So I guess I want a nod from the council. Are you prepared to vote on this today, or you need to defer it?
I prefer to defer.
To...
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Ready to vote? Okay.
I'm going to be a no vote if we vote on it today, because I still have some outstanding questions.
Me, too.
I'd prefer to be a yes vote.
Do we have a motion?
We haven't put it on the, we haven't put it on, we haven't put it on the table yet, so I'm just checking before it goes on the table.
Take five minutes to read the motion.
What?
I'm just exaggerating. I said it would take five minutes to read the motion.
What are we going to get, now and the next possible vote? What information, setbacks? What are we going to get?
What information are you waiting for?
The two things that I asked for, which is the information around the minimum setbacks and how that plays with this development and how, and how parking gets played out. I think those are two pretty critical pieces of information that I need to forward. I feel somewhat comfortable with it, but I'd like the rest of the council to be informed about that conversation and that information.
Hang on one second, Mike. I just want to ask a question. So is that realistic before we get to the next meeting, or are you going to be able to provide that information?
Sure. We could by Monday have, have something in writing that addresses those issues. We've talked, I mean, we would probably need another 10 minutes to talk through that today, if you wanted us to try to do that. But otherwise, we could prepare that for Monday.
Does that work on our agenda? Can we fit that in?
Yes, we'll, we'll work on, we'll put that in, and what's the best way to do that? If that's what the majority of council would like, we're happy to do that.
It's not. It's what one wants.
It's what one wants, so...
But that's what we're going to honor.
Well, no, we can put it on the table. Like, Betty can put the motion on the table. I'm looking for a sense of the, I'm looking for a sense of the council.
I'm willing to wait. You know, it's just a few days, and I think they're important questions, and it's not like we'll hold anything back by waiting till Monday.
No, we, we scheduled time Monday, too, not knowing if we'd be in this situation where you'd want more time.
I think we're almost there, but another 10 minutes would, if we get another yes vote, we'll...
Okay. All right. So let's, we'll...
It would be helpful if, maybe if you just vote that you want to move it to Monday, that just helps us out.
Okay. So we commit to that?
So we know who, that it's Claire.
All right. You want to put that motion on the...
I move that we postpone the vote till Monday.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? You're opposed even, oh, you want to do it today? Okay, gotcha. All right. Well, thank you very much. We will vote on that on Monday. I appreciate your quick presentation. Thank you.
Yes.
Good job.